Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I'd like to invite Alexis Fleming from the Girl Scout troop, 9050, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Which leads to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands for the nation under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing that. So, presentations, proclamations, and visitors, tonight we have also Girl Scout troop 9050. Welcome. Did you guys have a presentation or?
So my name is Ron Fleming. My address is 135 Southwest Kendrick Street, Simleman, Oregon, 97385. I want to thank you all again for welcoming us in here to come and take part and witness the city council meeting. Some of you may recognize me, some of you may not. If you don't, I'll try, I'll try better. Okay? So tonight we have our older, like last time we were here, we were with our younger scouts, we were with our Cub Scouts. They were learning a little bit more about civics and a little bit about government and how things are ran. Our older scouts are here tonight with a different objective. They're here studying communication. They spent the last couple of weeks learning about different forms of verbal and nonverbal communication. They've learned about different forms of communication through media like posters and websites and adverts like that. And so tonight they're here with the objective of learning how different points of one view can be kind of settled or discussed about in a subtle manner. And in a public setting. So that's kind of what their objective is here tonight. And I just kind of want to give them a couple of minutes to kind of open the floor if they have any questions or anything like that for you all.
No? I would love to hear a couple of questions, at least from one of you guys. I promise we don't bite.
So I have one for it. So since we're talking about communication and dealing with different points of view, since your time as mayor, I know it's been a little bit short, but since your time working with the city, we'll put it that way. Have you, what has been the most contested issue or the most decisive issue that you've dealt with? And how did you navigate that communicating effectively and fairly?
So we have, I think the biggest thing are how our community can get involved has been come up a lot. We had some stuff on our Facebook page. And where, where can people? I guess the proper channels on how to communicate concerns and then versus talking amongst themselves or and how to address it to the city. And then what is the council's role in that versus, you know, city ordinances and staff that that we don't get involved in? So that's, that's been pretty big lately. Another thing is definitely are, we just put out asking signatures for our wastewater treatment. So that's going to be pretty big in town. It's affecting the whole town, you know, looking at raising our water bill if we don't get some funding. On how, how we move forward, like what our biggest concerns are, who's going to be the most impacted? Our planning on how to communicate with the community as well as communicating with our state leaders and our federal leaders, the importance of why is Amso important enough to get money? We're asking for a substantial amount of money to get this new facility built. And why are we different from other cities? And why should we get that money has been?
Lots of communication, I can assume that.
Yes.
Just point quick, just so nobody, so there's no confusion. So we are actually a Scouts BSA Girls troop. I don't want anybody out there to get confused with Girl Scouts. We don't sell cookies. We Scouts BSA offers a program from kindergarten through fifth grade and they call it Cub Scouts. And those are like the little guys that were here last time. At that point, they switch, they kind of more split up and they become a girls' unit and a boys' unit. And that's when they get to start. They get to do much the same program as traditional Boy Scout program and get to like Earn Eagle and stuff like that. So a couple of years back, they made that change. And that's what, that's what they're going to do.
I apologize for calling them Girl Scouts.
Totally okay. I just wanted to, just in case anybody was listening, like, hey, they're not Girl Scouts. Any questions? No? Okay. So I guess we're going to observe and kind of listen to you guys, watch you guys talk unless you guys have anything else for us.
Do you have a question time later at the end if they think of some while we're meeting tonight?
Something planned?
And we do have something for you at the end of the meeting. So please don't leave right away.
All right. Thank you.
Next, public comments. Do we have any one online? Oh, approve the agenda. I'm sorry. We get a motion to approve the agenda.
Would you approve the agenda as presented?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda approved. Council table and then
That's just all of it.
So we have no public hearings, no old business, new business. We have budget committee appointments and the TML update. All right, guys. I apologize. Can we get the emotion to approve the consent agenda? I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I've
And I'll abstain since I was not present for
Thank you. Now we can move on to new business budget committee appointments and the TMDL updates.
Here, I'll start off with just a quick staff report for the budget committee appointments. We had two positions that were expired that were, we had applicants to be reappointed for. And because we actually had two previous budget committee members who were elected or appointed as council representatives, we had two open positions. We have three applicants before you tonight, and there's a sample motion if council feels inclined. We didn't present an application for our reappointments because they've been on the committee for a long time. And I, I felt like you all knew who they were that we really didn't need to run them through. I was happy they were willing to be reappointed. But we do have a new applicant and that is in your packet. Really, the criteria for being on the budget committee is one that they live in the city because under budget law were required to get equal amount of citizen representation as elective representation on the budget committee. And other than that is great if they have, you know, some sort of professional background where they can absorb the information that we absorb and hopefully ask questions and confirm that our presentation looks correct and, and is heading in the right direction. But other than that, there's really not any particular criteria except for that we think these will be people that will participate in good faith and work, work towards getting us an adopted budget. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So we're looking for motions to reappoint. They have to be separate, right? Is that correct?
Each motion would be separate, yes.
A motion. Does anyone have any questions on the application? Or any wish to discuss?
I just mentioned to Ron that I know Austin, he was my neighbor for a while back when I lived in Mill Creek. And I'm really excited that he put his hat in because I know he, when he was going to school previously, he kind of had a lot of questions about what a counselor does, how they get involved. And I know because of time commitments, you know, he wasn't able to, I think, be involved. And I think he's kind of now at a place where he's able to kind of be involved at least a little bit. So I was pretty happy to see him put his hat in.
There's no other questions. Can we get a motion?
Move to appoint Austin Gallup to the vacated budget committee seat with a term expiring 7/31/2023.
Oh, that's, that's not correct, is it? Oh, yes, that's assured. That's correct.
That'd be the, yeah, I think, yeah.
Give me a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Austin is now appointed to the vacated position. I need a motion for Tammy.
I move to reappoint Tammy Bennett to the budget committee with a term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tammy Bennett is appointed.
Also move to reappoint Carla Wilmshin to the budget committee with the term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carla is reappointed. So we still have one position open. What, when does that one expire?
I think that's a 2023 as well. For some reason, I, in my mind, I was getting the dates mixed up. But yes, that'll be a short term as well. We still do, we still are advertising the application on the city website. And it's in the city newsletter. However, we're getting close to our budget session. So if we don't get it appointed, that's fine. We just have to advertise it. If somebody steps forward, we'll, we'll bring them forward.
Thank you, Ron.
Moving on to the T, I'm going to say this wrong. TMDL update.
Good evening, everyone. So I was here a few months ago. There's some new faces. This last year, the EPA and DEQ had new TMDL limits for mercury. So the last time I was here at council, we brought some updates to our TMDL matrix that addressed the mercury limits. Since we've, since we've done that, that was the end of our five-year cycle. And so we've had to renew the matrix. This new matrix, I, I wrote a staff report and kind of addressed some of the things that are important for council here. The new matrix has moved from more of a, from more of a voluntary based matrix to a mandatory enforcement action compliance matrix. So before we could say, we're trying to lower the temperature in the creek by planting a few trees. Now they're wanting to know how many trees a year we're going to plant. And if we don't plant that many trees, then we will get an enforcement letter and civil penalties for not planting so many trees. So in your council packet, you'll see the staff report. I also included the 2018 to 2023 matrix. And you can kind of look at the wording, you'll see in the wording like recommendation and just soft language. They, with the new matrix, they've changed that, that language. And like I said, there's quantity limits, our quantity amounts that we have to report. We're going to have to report and include like all of our public education where before we could just say we did public education through the newsletter. Now we're going to have to include those articles and basically write a report on if we feel like those reports did any, or those social media posts or newsletter articles did any kind of good. So we'll have to track it through like webpage traffic.
Like the engagement.
Yeah, engagement. Yeah. So we'll have to, we'll have to do that. So I'll just briefly go through some of the major things that have changed. One of the major things is they want us to report annually funding source for TMDL projects. So we talked about in the past stormwater fee, stormwater STCs. Those are things that, right now, the way we, the way we fund TMDL projects is through streets, general fund, parks. But by doing those things, we're taking away from those funds. We are not able to pave this many potholes. We're not able to upgrade our playground equipment. So having a revenue source for TMDL and stormwater projects is going to be pretty important. We can continue down the path that we've been doing as far as compliance wise, but what they would like to see is a funding source separate for stormwater and TMDL projects. So staff will will review other cities ordinances and their policies on how they fund stormwater projects. And within the next five years, we'll be bringing that to council. Maybe some ideas on how we can do that and have as little impact on the community as possible, but also be able to meet the requirements of the new matrix. As part of that, they, they want to see an ordinance separate for stormwater and TMDL. They'll want to see enforcement actions in that ordinance. So if there's someone in the community that's constantly got muddy stuff running out into the street that we have an ordinance and we can go to them and enforce stormwater based ordinance violations. And we have to track that and it has to have fees and fines associated with that. So that's, that's another major, another major one. Our street sweeping and catch basin cleaning, we do that now. Before it was, we just reported the quantities that we pulled from the streets every year, the catch basins. Now they want a regular schedule. So in the new matrix, we put that we will be doing it quarterly. But as you guys have seen, we have an aging street sweeper. So that's kind of the minimum. We're going to try to get it out monthly, but if we have problems, we have to keep to that quarterly street sweeping schedule. And so that's again, we're a funding source that we can be putting money away for a new street sweeper. We recently bought the Vactor truck. And you guys know that that's, that those kind of pieces of equipment are not cheap. So trying to, trying to have a revenue source for that stuff is again, an important factor. Will be required to annually inspect outfalls or in our ditches. We regularly find that people are dumping their yard debris in the ditches and without a strong ordinance, we're not able to enforce those rules as well as we should be. So we'll, we'll have to report those kinds of things coming up. And then training requirements will be, staff will have to be trained on the new stormwater rules annually. So and there we put that we would send part of our staff every year to some sort of training. Kaiser often has a stormwater training that is relatively inexpensive and close that we can go to. And that's kind of where we're going to start. So that pretty much covers it. If you guys have any questions, I know for some of you, it's maybe it's a little bit new. But I'm here to answer any kind of questions you guys might have. Like I said, in the next five years, we will be bringing to council options for funding the ordinances. We'll review other cities ordinances and kind of steal the best parts and try to bring them and develop a good ordinance for it. And yeah, we'll just continue with our projects the way that they are now and try to grow on those. So any questions?
Just for the people that we're going to watch later on Zoom, can you tell them what, or just what TMDL stands?
Yeah. So TMDL is the total maximum daily loads. And the EPA has set limits for the Lamont Basin. That's the basin that all of our stormwater drains into, and that's Mill Creek and Beaver Creek. And right now they are, they don't meet, those creeks don't meet water quality standards. And so the EPA's set a table and said, cities and counties and local jurisdictions have to put some sort of effort into reducing pollutants in those, in that basin. And our, our three pollutants that we track are bacteria, temperature, and mercury. Mercury is often caused from erosion. It's found in the soils. It's also comes over to us from other countries. So it's kind of hard for us to regulate that, but that's why the, the, the matrix is there. Temperature and bacteria, the bacteria is, you know, we have the muttment stations and the parks and the walkways. That's our way of trying to reduce the bacteria impacts on the Lamont Basin. And then temperature is our street tree program. We developed a street tree program, we're Street, Street, or Tree City USA. Those are all things that will reduce temperature in the stormwater. So those are the three main pollutants that we have to track and try to reduce.
So Matt, just for council's information, would you give the preview of what's next for the plan? And then if it's coming back from, from for council, the formal adoption, we know the ordinances that's associated with the implementation will come back. But let's talk a little bit more about the implementation.
Yeah. So the, the new matrix that you'll find in your council packet, that was approved by DEQ and a few months ago, we have approved a proposal to have Keller help us develop that plan. But we worked with Keller and Associates and our DEQ representative to come up with the, with the new matrix. That, that's our matrix that was approved by DEQ for the next five years. So that's kind of what we have to live by for the next five years. We will, I don't really have a schedule yet, but we will be bringing the council, like I said, the ordinances, the funding options. And those are the two, the two big ones. The norm, the other things that you'll find in there are our street tree programs already in place, street sweeping, catch basins, those are already in place, public education. We'll continue to do that. Those things are already in place. So it's just a matter of continuing those things and improving those things. So the, the, really the next steps are, I don't know if we need a motion to have council approve the current
Yeah. Matrix. Well, that, that, I, I guess that's what I wanted to make clear is I think council does need to actually formally adopt the plan. I don't know if they're prepared to do it tonight.
Yeah.
But what, what is the schedule that we could do that? I mean, the
Yeah, we could do it. It's, it's been, our, our goal was, or our deadline was to have the plan to DEQ by February. So I assume that within the next year, the council will have to adopt this plan. So probably in the next month or two, we'll adopt the new plan. The funding element, that's a requirement that, so we'll have to take something in February of next year and report on the matrix, how we funded these matrix activities. Like I said, we can continue and say we're going to do fund it through streets and parks and sewer general fund this year. And that, that's our requirement. But then maybe next year, we come up with a source to fund some of the, the projects through a fee or some other means. And then the ordinances, we'll probably bring pieces of the ordinance to you guys in the next several years to, to update. We have to have the ordinance by the end of the five-year cycle. So by 2023, we have to have an ordinance in place, approved by council, adopted by council. And on the books. Does that answer everything?
Yeah. So that's actually what I was, I was getting to council. So we've talked about this a couple of times, but as council knows, we're also being brought into the metropolitan planning district or SCATS. And as part of that, we will have to adhere to all the federal stormwater regulatory standards. So we've been talking to you for the last couple of years because we knew the TMDL implementation phase was on the horizon, but also as part of that MTO, we do need to have a separate funding stormwater mechanism. So we're looking at a stormwater system development, master plan, stormwater, probably a stormwater fee, utility fee. Although those are, tend to be fairly small because the master plan elements tend, tend to be much less expensive than like a water or sewer fee. And then of course, we'll have to have some sort of regulatory and enforcement. We have a lot of the regulatory framework in place through our Public Works design standards. Those will have to be updated in subsequent years to meet some of the federal standards. So as an example, right now, we build a road. Stormwater drainage tends to just be a ditch on the side of the road. But through federal standards, you have to have onsite treatment and distribution of that stormwater mechanism. So you see, when you go through the city asylum, you might see like some sort of a stormwater garden along the side of the road or a, a, some, something that might have grass or plant life in it. Or at the very minimum, some sort of a grass ditch that has, you know, curbs that channel the water in the right direction with some sort of stormwater overflow. So we're going to be looking at things like that. And there will be a funding and an enforcement mechanism. That's why I wanted to get to the, the scheduling. So that'll be in the, in the next year, we're going to be developing a lot of that framework.
And we've just recently updated our public work standards and with West Tech, and we annually review those every year. So we have, you know, they'll be looking at, at our standards to make sure they meet the water quality standards and they're taking in some of these requirements. Again, we'll be reviewing them too. That was one of the matrix items that we review our public work standards annually and make sure that they meet the requirements. One thing we're doing, any kind of redevelopment application that we're, that's coming in was, we're saying you developer, you're in charge of your stormwater. So the city doesn't have to take on that burden. You know, big development, you're, you're maintaining it, you're building it, you're doing all of it, and the city is not taking that on because each one of those, each one of those facilities like Ron was talking about, they're, they're expensive to maintain.
And that was part of the council's growth pays for growth.
Alrighty. Thank you.
I did have some question.
Yeah. So when you're new major, when you're new guy, I was talking about, they were really wanting to add here. Do you have an idea or do they give you a number about what kind of funding should they get? Obviously, we offered someone like $20 a year. Do they have a lot of progress that probably they can see us? Or do we have any of those numbers?
Um, no, we don't have any numbers. They just want to see that we have a funding source for some of the projects. You know, we can kind of put together what we'll do for councils. We'll put together an idea of how much trees cost, how much maintenance annually, the water quality basins and detention ponds cost to maintain. Right now, we're figuring they're about $3,500 a year to maintain. And we have several of those throughout the city. And we're using parks funds and street funds to Yeah. So we, we mow them, we spray them, we keep them up. And so it's about, and so we'll have to go through that and then develop basically a fee structure that's going to support those things. And it'll probably be a phased sort of process because we are doing it with parks and streets and sewer fund right now. So we can just continue to do that, but phase that part out so that more of that money is going towards our other, our other funds throughout the year. So
And then if you and Chris are going to be part of this, Tree City USA and Tree City stuff picks up, who would we contact to do that?
Yeah, you could contact anyone at City Hall or Public Works. And we're always open to tree planting projects or cleaning of the ditch. Those are all things we can report in the matrix, annually, that would help, help the city. So yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Moving on to number seven, city administrator report.
Right. I don't have a lengthy report for you tonight. We do have a work session tomorrow. We're going to go in some, into some strategic planning elements in depth, but obviously we're not making any decisions or anything. It's just to talk in depth on some of the more technical aspects of some of the things on our horizon. There's been a number of legislative actions in the last few years that are being implemented in, at the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of June. And at that point, we have to make some decisions. So we've got a few things we really need to decide and, and take some action on before that point. I think I reported to you that our staffing because hiring our, our open staff positions are, is going really well. I think we're, we're really only looking for about one position and, and we're through background with that one person. So PD's looking pretty good. We're still not quite up to full patrol strength because we have one officer that's going through FTO training right now. And then one new hire that has to go into the academy in August. And so we're still, we're still down a couple. So the, the schedules, we, we've got open time throughout the day that sometimes we don't have people on shift, but we're covering as much of it as possible. Um, sometimes we don't have people on ship, but we're covering as much of it as possible. Uh, there's the police reports in your packet, they're very active, as you can see by the number of calls. For service, even though we've been dealing with some limited staffing situations, we're actually handling more. Um, we're actually handling more calls and and you can also see by the report that um. Uh, by far, the the majority of calls are now shifted to inside the city, so. We do, uh we had traditionally done a lot of uh. Uh neighboring city assist calls, so we still still do those. But now we've adopted a policy where we only go uh on those calls if there's a um. Uh, if it's like a life threatening or critical condition, you know, domestic violence, something like that. We don't just respond to a call because there's not an officer available in another city if it's unless it's a. A critical call. So we're doing that, public works report, that's in your packet as well. Uh, there is a a D E Q warning letter uh from a situation last year. Uh, I think we just got it in, yeah, March fourteenth, um. And I wanted to give that to council just so that you could see it, it doesn't, it doesn't uh accompany a fine. But this was a situation where um. Our wastewater facility is limited in in calendar dates when we can discharge. Uh, and it's a fixed date, one of the things we've argued to D E Q is it really should be based on creek flow. Uh, not a calendar date, so they use a calendar date because they feel within this timeframe. Uh, this is when the lowest creek flows would be, but what happens is is on the shoulders, the month before on each end of those calendar dates. Uh, we oftentimes get heavy rainfalls. And this was one of those particular situations, so it actually kind of proved our point. And that is, if you're getting heavy rainfall and you're sending millions and millions of water. Into the river or the creeks. And the creek flow is rising. And you're sending millions and millions of gallons through I N I, which is inflow of stormwater. Into the sewer treatment facility. It overruns the capacity of the facility. And even though our water is treated. It, we can't send it out to the creek because of the calendar restriction. And so what happens is is we get to a point where the ponds fill up to where they're actually gonna overflow. Because of the amount of water coming in, if they overflow, we'll have a critical failure and we'll lose the ponds. So we're forced to discharge to the creek, even though. Our permit restricts us to a calendar date. That's the event that occurred that we. Received this warning letter, but you know, it's one of those things we're working through through the. Uh sewer um compliance schedule and the the new discharge permit. Um, it's kind of interesting that the timing of this because. I don't know if I want to say the city, but you can read it in the paper, a neighboring city was fined forty two thousand dollars this week for it. Exactly the same. Uh type of a situation and that was discharging. Um, outside of their ammonia limits, which is what we're under an enforcement action for too, so. You kind of got a lot of those things that are happening in the regulatory. Uh branches of government and we're just trying to, we're trying to, you know, just work our way through all of that regulatory stuff. But I did want to bring that to your attention and it does highlight why it's important. Um, you know, for us to really work on this new facility because we want to get it running within compliance and. We want to get on the same page with D E Q and get them on the same page with what our. Our our needs are, but sometimes you wonder. You know, what's the rationale of some of the policy to us? The rationale is if you've got high flows. That should it, we should be okay to discharge, not a calendar date. Depending on the calendar date isn't depending on the weather. So you could be at your calendar date and have a low flow and be allowed to discharge, so it really doesn't. It really doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, but anyway, we're working towards that, um I think the rest unless you guys uh have, oh, I'll just report on a couple of things. Our emergency generator for our water system has arrived, as you as you guys know, that's been in transit for several months. And um that project, all the infrastructure is in place, uh that project's gonna wrap up in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so um, you know, we'll we'll have that one under our belt and. Um, so we're headed in spring and summer, so we'll be great at this point, I I doubt we're gonna have a major power failure event. In the summertime, but who knows, uh and then um. We are, we do have a number of franchises uh that are up for renewal. We have a number of new laws at both the state and federal level. And we have a couple of new companies that have approached. The city asking for franchise agreements, so all of a sudden we have. Not out of planning, but just compounding effect of a lot of different uh elements working together. We have uh quite a little bit of franchise work to do, now we didn't really plan to do that. Usually the renewals are fairly easy, um some of these other things are gonna be more intensive, so. Um, we'll have to get started on that right away, uh one, we'll have to look at our franchise ordinances to make sure they're now in compliance with the new law changes. Um, and we'll do that first. Uh, and then um we'll have to approve the renewals and then work on the new ones and and it's not in inexpensive work. Um, you know, it's gonna be a bit costly, um our budget's looking pretty good, so I'm not really concerned about the cost. Um, just wanting you to know there's some unexpected costs, which there always is in government, but uh it's it's uh, you know, it's it's spendy work. Um, and we're gonna have to do that, the good news is is we will subsequently receive revenue from those franchises. Um, in the future, so we'll, we should be seeing increased revenues from. Uh, the new franchises that we're gonna bring on board. Uh, and then um. Corn Festival sponsors, uh you know, we we, I just feel like. Um, staff almost races around City Hall all day long. Uh, working on so many issues and. We just, we've tried to get some sponsors, we just haven't been able to invest as much time as we typically would be. So we'll get as many as we can, but I just want council to know, if you know somebody that wants to sponsor Corn Festival, please send them forward. Um, but we may end up having to. Uh, kick in a little bit of funds, but my opinion is, like I said to council, I kind of pre-warned you about this earlier in the year. Um, we're better off to throw ten thousand dollars in. For our, make our event successful and allow staff to be able to work on multimillion dollar grants. Cause the return on our time is much greater and. That's the kind of stuff we want to be able to uh say to the community, we leverage millions of dollars and yeah, we had to kick in a few bucks here. So, uh, other than that, the rest of it can come uh tomorrow night. And hopefully everybody can be there, and if you have any other questions, happy to answer.
Now that, before I got this position as the the mayor, I had helped out a lot, um. Trying to find sponsors for. Corn Festival last year, if anyone even want to take that up and have the time, I no longer have the time to do that. Um, my priorities are. On that fifteen million dollar wastewater request and those meetings, so if any of you. Want to take that up, please, welcome to reach out to Ron. I did spend a lot of time and a lot of outreach just to get a few.
Yeah, and what we find is it's our local companies and businesses, we tend to get sponsors from. I think people have just been busy, so we haven't gotten a lot of response back, um. Going to outside corporations, I don't want to rule it out, but it is very time consuming. And the chances of success are much more diminished. Than local entities, but if that's something that you guys know somebody or have a connection with and and you all want to do that work. We're still gonna have a great event, we're gonna improve the event again this year, we've already got lots of interest from folks in. Yeah, as vendors and things like that, so it's it's gonna, it's gonna do well, but um. Uh, sponsors this year is just, we just haven't had that amount of time, which is fi- I think fine, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal. Well, it's a, it's a company that wants to get a tax deduction and give us money. Uh, no, we try to work with the, we try to work, we have a uh sponsorship. Chart, I guess, so if you sponsor at a certain level, we give you. Things like free advertisement and a place down at the festival and different things like that, depending on where you, where you, how much you contribute. Um, but we try to work with each of the entities individually, we've had people that said. I'll give a certain amount of dollars, but I want to be the exclusive sponsor of this piece. Of the event. Um, and we've offered to do things like that, so we just try to work with them to find out, what is it that you'd like to get as a sponsor? To be part of our event and then we'll structure something for them.
We've had people like sponsor certain.
Yep.
Was it our company the one year, somebody gave us reusable bags one year.
The the bank typically would get uh in past years, the Riverview Bank would print their name on reusable bags. Reusable bags prices have really went through the whoop, they went way up in the since covid. Um, and so they're, they get pretty spendy to do that, but um. Uh, sometimes people will do that because they've already got them printed with their name on it and then it's an extra, it's an extra source of advertisement, we've had people. Give us money to just put a flyer for their store in the bag, so we we basically just talk to them and find out, what are you trying to get? From the relationship and some people just want to give us money and support the event, but there are people that want to get some sort of, I'm gonna have a special. And I want to try to generate some foot traffic and then we'll come up with something. Uh, for them, typically, uh, the last. Couple of years, we've probably been getting around eighteen to twenty thousand dollars on average. Um, which I think. Historically is is much larger than the Corn Festival typically would have generated, so we've done really well by. Um, taking some of our staff during the slow time. And having them do some of that work, but it's just this year, we're just super slammed, so. Alright, anything else, any other questions, happy to answer.
Moving on to mayor and councillor reports.
I'll tell you, we had our parks open house and it went well, we got lots of comments. Um, we have in the process of putting the final plans together and submitting those to Planning Commission for. After and then hopefully by.
You know, while we're gonna like the projection on. Actual groundbreaking on the park would be wrong. When we have money, yeah.
Oh, uh, no. So uh I will just give council a quick uh preview, so the. The first thing we have to do is adopt, uh do the community outreach portion of a updated park master plan, which is what we're. What we're doing with the open houses, I believe we're gonna try to schedule April twentieth. To take the uh. Uh. Suggested uh plan forward to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, so what we've been doing up till now has been public. Input, so we've had open houses at the school and here at the city, uh. Looking at different conceptual plans, asking the community what they think they need. What they'd like to see, different things like that, and then that work got rolled up into some conceptual plans. Um, and then I think now what we've done is take those conceptual plans and we've had the community kind of vote on them through these surveys and. Uh, and so one of those plans and and one seems to be a clear favorite, I think.
Seventy percent to thirty percent.
Yeah, and so what will happen is is then staff will make a recommendation to adopt that, so that's one phase. You have to have a master plan for the park in order to qualify for grants, so you have to show. That you went out and uh you had a process to develop needs, got community input. Uh, and then you've incorporated those needs into a plan. And so that's kind of part of what we're doing, the second part of what we're doing is. The park actually currently doesn't sit inside the city limits, um. We purchased uh the property a few years ago because we had. An opportunity. Uh, to get to get it very inexpensively and it was identified as a future park area. Uh, in our, in our previous plan, that was the area that we needed. Uh, a park, so we took the chance and and purchased uh the property. And so now we have to get our our urban growth boundary. Moved out beyond the limits of the park, so then we can incorporate it into the city limits. So those things all have to happen before we can actually do anything. Uh, on the property and so uh we'll talk more about. That in our retreat probably towards the. End of the month and get some direction from council and how that project's moving forward, we may have time tomorrow to touch on it. Uh, I don't know, but um. Uh, once we get that work done, then we can start applying for grants and. You know, to build that park out to the master plan uh concept, it's probably. I don't know, Dave's probably got some estimates, but.
Twenty.
It's probably, I was gonna say ten to twenty million dollars. Um, so you're not gonna, we're not gonna end up doing that all at once, what we're gonna end up doing is we're gonna end up applying in phases. Uh, for work, um now if we happen to see um. Lot of growth in the city, we've got, you know, quite a few applications kind of hovering out there that haven't been submitted. But it's people that are looking at large parcels, as those develop, there will be opportunities for system development charges to accrue. And um that can help us get there a lot quicker. With with some of the park system development charges. So, did I answer?
Um, I myself had a couple of meetings that set up with uh state and federal leaders, uh we were continuing. To touch base about where we're at with communication as far as lobbying. And then obviously we had this, the. The thing about on the asking for signatures. Residents asking and and even business people, like business in this town, please. Add your signature of. For our wastewater treatment facility. And then the only thing I want to touch base on is that I myself have been getting a lot of questions about how to get involved in town and the proper channels to do that. And so the people that watch this later on do. There there are links on the city webpage, there's a volunteer form for people to get involved. And there's obviously a link to address concerns that you have. That there is a proper way to communicate and. And we, we do check. Question time, if you had any questions now. I think of any questions? No. Come up and say your name.
Uh, I'm Kayla Webb, uh the people, the three people that you guys reelected, what will their jobs be for the budget?
For the the two people, we reelected two, so they've already been on the the Budget Committee and then we just appointed a new one. So they're gonna come in and they're gonna meet with other people in the Budget Committee, they're gonna review the city budget, which is pretty extensive, it makes my eyes go cross. Um, and they're gonna talk about the spending that's happened last year, what we have in the budget, the things that we need to spend on. And if there's enough money and then they talk about different um things that are going to affect. How we spend those money and then they put a report together and then we have a really long meeting and we go over everything by line. And that's what they do and they're volunteers.
Cool, uh that was all.
My name's Nathan Webb, I'm I'm the scout master for troop ninety fifty. Um, and as a scout master, I want to just point out that um. Our youth need service hours, um so we will be contacting your. Our youth need service hours, um, so we will be contacting your parks uh department. Um, but we heard uh tonight about. Um. Needs for conservation um of uh to help prevent erosion. Uh, one of my girls that are here tonight um is, uh, she is currently the rank of star. And uh in order to get her next rank. Um, by the date that end goal that she set of next September, she needs to do six hours of community service. Three of those hours has to be conservation minded. Uh, and uh, part of the principles of the scouting uh program is to provide service. And to do a good turn daily uh and to uh to help out uh in our community and to serve at all times. Uh, so we encourage. Um, you as a city council to come up with ways. That um a and come up with a list of ways that the scouting programs uh in your community, both troop fifty. And troop ninety fifty can serve your community.
And we have a, we have a uh overabundance of opportunities. So you could put hundreds of hours of time in in a year. Um, from community events to special projects. Uh, that you might have. So the only, the only issue that we have is anytime just because of liability reasons. Anytime that we uh take on volunteers for anything specific, we have to have professional staff there. To oversee and monitor them, so that's really the hitch, but uh we have pre-programmed many, many, many uh opportunities, so. Um, Ron, I think gets those emails from us for Corn Festival and Superhero Carnival. You guys have been involved in all of those, but. Um, if you're, if you need something specific because of a criteria, we just need to know what that is, we'll work it in.
I'd be a little bit better now. Hey, for coming, ladies.
Next on the agenda is correspondence. It says none. And um there. There's no executive session, so we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at. Seven fifty six P M.